I just want to thank you for being invited to be here tonight. Let us pray. Holy God, we pause before the work of this day to give thanks and to pray for our city and these leaders. We come with many burdens, both personal and professional, and pray that you will attend to our needs. We give thanks for the communities that support us, the spouses, friends, neighbors, and loved ones who enable us to be here tonight. And we thank you for the many blessings and for the opportunity to serve the people of this city. I pray for all these elected and appointed officials entrusted with the holy calling of public service. Remind them of the power to seek the welfare of the city and its residents. Grant them wisdom, grant them concern for the needs of the people, and grant them the ability to work together even in disagreements. And we pray for the agenda set before them this day, that they may be a blessing to Eastridge and all who call this home. In God's holy, precious name we pray. Amen. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you.
Ms. Milton, would you go up, please?
Mayor Wiggins?
Here.
Vice Mayor Hilton, here. Councilmember Cagle?
Yes, here.
Councilmember Johnson?
Here.
Councilmember Lidda, here. Assistant City Manager Hester?
Here.
City Attorney Litcher?
Here.
Underneath the consent agenda, we have four items: the approval of minutes December 10th, an orderation, and a motion meeting approval minutes December 13th. Agenda work session, the approval of minutes December 13th, where we have a council meeting, and the approval of minutes November 2018 financial report. Hope that everyone's had a chance to review these minutes. And we have motions for approval. A second clear. A motion from Vice Mayor Hilton and, as you say, Councilmember Johnson. Do you have any discussion?
I've got some questions on the budget amendment and some on the budget. All right. I called this four of my visits the first time I came through. Some of the capital project funds, the numbers don't add up right, but this time they added new from last time. So we're showing four million seven hundred twenty-one thousand five hundred. I added up four million six hundred seventy-one thousand.
How correct, to be full second rate, I'm sorry.
And over here in the financial fund, what I'm not using. But what it has to do, the seven point, the seven hundred twenty-five thousand dollars that you got loans in, is that what our top of the pile is?
Yes, sir.
It's probably going to be tricked back out.
Yeah, yeah, that's an expenditure to go against, yeah.
But we're not getting the power, so it won't be an expenditure.
Well, well, we have, we received the money. If we choose to go with the other option, that will be before we have to not, then we will use the proceeds that we need, and then we will turn around and give back. We'll say the project is complete, and then we will get the remaining balance back that's left, and that will change how much we pay back.
And we give it back about, about number four hundred thousand dollars?
Yes, sir. But that's how it will work, is we do it that way.
I just want to make sure.
So, I'm sorry.
So actually, if we pay it back, then, yeah, we're still, you know, it's still going to spend, so.
So we bonded it out? We received the fines?
Yes, we are.
So we'll return unused fines?
Yes.
To reduce the service?
Yes.
Any other questions? Do we, do we make a motion? Do we have a, do we have a motion with the amended?
Right, we can make a motion. The vice of mine, right, or we're going to, Councilman Cagle, on that one.
Do we move to rescind the motion of previous, or do we just?
A motion approved, a motion approved.
Let's move to amend the motion subject to the correction identified by Councilman Cagle.
Am I going to amend the motion subject to, what did you say?
The correction identified by Councilman Cagle.
Correction. Is that the budget amendment?
Budget amendment, payback.
That's not.
It's in the, uh, order.
That's not.
Okay, so it's an amendment to the financial report. Then what we're saying, is that one of the error, you notice?
I'm just a big young state. Now, y'all put finance, if you want to work, I don't think it is, I don't think the state is still in financial, it is in the, it's difficult to catch it, it's, it's all flooding up, so.
Look, let's, we still have a motion on the table, so let's move to amend, why don't we do this, Councilman Cagle, if you want to just rescind yours, and then why don't you make the motion to identify the correction that you want with regards to the adoption of the consent agenda? Let's do that.
So, Ms. Hilton made the motion?
I'm sorry, Ms. Hilton made the motion. All right, you want to rescind yours?
Okay. Then do a summary of the consent motion files.
I'm hoping to rescind my second.
Now, Councilman Cagle?
I'd like to make the motion that we amend the budget amendment. It reads four million seven hundred twenty-one thousand five hundred. I committed to four million six hundred seventy-one thousand five hundred for the correction that we paid back.
Hold on, we're not to the budget amendment yet, we're at the financials. Let's, not to take that, I think what we're going with, let's move to approve the consent agenda subject to revision of 4D, which is the November 2018 financial report.
Right, that's what I thought.
When we get to the budget amendment, we'd like that same motion?
Which is a, a, correct. This would just be an amendment to the financial report, any consent agenda, correct?
Correct.
Do I have a second? Are we in a motion with amendment, uh?
To clarify, the motion is to approve the consent agenda subject to amendment of 4D, the November 2018 financial report.
That was by Councilman Cagle, and seconded by Councilman Wood. Any other discussion? Go up, please.
Vice Mayor Hilton? Yes. Councilmember Cagle?
Here.
Councilmember Johnson?
Yes.
Councilmember Lidda?
Yes.
Mayor Wiggins?
Yes.
Approved. Next, we'll move into communication assistance. So at this time, I'm 13, anyone that is a resident or business owner in Eastridge that would like to come forward and address the council, we have a sign sheet, we have three, and then we'll take any, I'm going to have a sign to the floor. First, we have his D-man.
It's good to see you, D.
Yes, it is. Glad to see you up in the aisle.
Just want to address 910, San Diego Circle, East Ridge, 10th. I want to thank all of y'all for all your prayers, colors, and flags. And still here, and Lord still bless me. And hadn't been without y'all's prayers, I wouldn't have been here. I've been amazed to the doctor, so I even blow dope lights, which I did the first time. So they ain't got the best times, and I'm still here, and I'll still be here and aggravate y'all, and y'all can aggravate me. God bless all of you. Apologize that it gets to come to your swearing-in, it's kind of hard to be here when you and I see you in the same town. I couldn't get them let me out. And they took the clothes with you because they know how to walk out, so. But anyhow, I just want to wish y'all having good luck, and apologize if I didn't make it, but I liked to have been there. Everybody y'all had a great time. And somebody named Shoxey, I didn't call him a name, but somebody named Shoxey eaten that third million, well, y'all tell him I saved him. God bless y'all.
Thank you, sir. Again, very good to see you up in the aisle, and hope you continue to improve. Next, we have Steve Paris.
Good evening, my name is John. Mr. Johnson, I live on Orlando Avenue. Earlier this week...
I'm sorry, could you give us your full address?
1323 Orlando Avenue.
Thank you, sir.
Earlier this week, the planning commission approved a plotting of a property across the street for me. Now, before I roll your eyes, I know this is not the planning commission. I have several neighbors in the backyard, two mans, who would have intended that meeting to show her opposition to what happened to that property. The reason we are not there is because I contacted City Hall, and I was told I would be contacted by mail prior to the hearing, so I would have an opportunity to oppose the said proposal. I was lied to at City Hall, and that upsets me very deeply.
I understand.
I wanted to be here and put it down on record. I want you all to know. Public perception, you know.
I understand, sir.
So, let me speak for that department. And I'll apologize if that's what you were told, because that's the department that I've been fortunate enough to be a part of for the last several years. Typically, when there's a request made for a subdivision, it also comes along with a rezoning, and that happens more often than not. And if this would have been the case, and it would have been a rezoning, then everyone within that area, within 300 feet, actually, 300 feet, if it touches a property lot, would have been noticed. So if you were told that, it was, you were told that inadvertently, and it wasn't, it wasn't malicious, I can promise. But like I say, when it comes to rezonings, that's, we do that, that's law. But when it's just a subdivision, or when you do a small subdivision, and you subdivide one parcel, that doesn't require notification, because that's within that one parcel.
I understand exactly what you're saying.
And I, I can...
But you need to understand what I'm saying. When I contacted City Hall, because I wanted to voice opposition to what was happening there, and I was told I would be notified before the meeting, and I was not, I found out about it after the fact. Call it discommunication, I realized it wasn't malicious, the fact of the matter is, City Hall lied to me, and we had lost our opportunity to oppose what's happening over there. Now, like I said, we're going to have a dozen people who live on, there are ten of us who live on that street, ten dwellings. We're now increasing it, like 40 percent. The street itself cannot maintain more than one vehicle at a time. My neighbors are planning, we have fences and barriers to keep the construction people off our properties, because our property is constantly being run over and damaged by, because of the fact that the street's not wide enough for more than one vehicle.
We can look into the width of the street. Actually, after this was brought to my attention, I actually did go through GIS and look, and we actually do own about three, three to five foot of rideaway that, so that the street could be expanded. It's not, if this was approved through RPA prior to coming to us, it always goes to the original planning agency first, and it checked off all our boxes, so that's when it comes to us to sign. And again, I apologize that you were told that, but we, it's not our practice in the past to, when somebody wants to subdivide a single lot like this, to make a notification, it's just not required. But that's, that's something we can definitely look into.
You definitely ought to consider, because I can understand a single lot being divided into two, this is two lots that have been divided into five.
At the, what, four acres, three acres?
1.73 acres. Now, I must say, I'm not at all happy. Like I said, public perception means a whole lot. It's important, your legacy to be transparency and honesty, you don't have to be discouraged.
Thank you, sir, I understand.
You know, I'd like to have someone look into what, to see what the city of Chattanooga, what they do with similar cases, if they notify the neighborhood residents of the plat, plat approvals, that sort of thing, to see what, just look into what other cities do.
Oh, I'd be happy to do that. You know, this, this comes back to what can you do with your property and the property rights. You know, they, they have the ability to subdivide property.
I understand.
It's not completing a little full-scale subdivision, I mean, they're going to build four, actually, it's two, two, two regular lots and two flats, y'all, two sitting up front and two in the back, which meant all the zoning requirements, all the planning requirements, that must end up there. And I'll be more than happy to look into it, because I do feel that, if, if that's the information that was portrayed, that was incorrect information, and I apologize on that.
And maybe, maybe just something we could do to notify the adjacent homeowners, something that, the project is as big as this is, it was a pretty big, pretty big subdivision, it's a five. But again, I guess just look into what city of Chattanooga, what they do to establish those situations.
It's rare occasion that you can't, something like this, without having to go through the zoning process, which, which would trigger...
Trigger it.
Multiple notifications, multiple meetings, I mean, you look at, you know, a plat sign, it's not flat, you go to the planning commission, or even it's already reviewed by staff, and small subdivisions like that, don't even have to go through the planning commission staff, you can go with the attorney's staff. But we choose to bring it to full planning commission.
I agree with Councilman Johnson to look to see what Chattanooga's doing, and also, even if it's not considered over communicating and under communicating.
Absolutely, I have no problem with that at all.
And I'll also pitch it to Mr. Paris and the other residents on the street, if and when construction does begin, if you're having problems with whatever problems you might be having, don't feel free to bring it to our attention.
No doubt about that.
Yeah, apologize, thank you, sir. Feel free to reach out to any one of us if you'd like to get any information related when you call. Next, we have is Steve Porter.
Good evening, councilmembers, appreciate your time. I'm Steve Porter, 3649 Indian Trail in East Ridge, and I'm here representing Jones Memorial United States Church. And last year, we have a little barbecue out there every year. This past September, we had a barbecue, annual barbecue, on the 15th of September, and it was our 43rd annual barbecue, and I just wanted to come and to report to you what we, what we did last year. We were able to raise some money to buy coats for the two elementary schools in East Ridge, you know, East Ridge Elementary and also Spring Creek Elementary, and we purchased 143 coats for the children in those two schools, and I wanted to report that to you. And also, for your information, for the last 43 years, we have purchased 2,978 coats that we have distributed in this community. So I want to thank you for your support that you give us every year, and also the citizens that are in this building here tonight, thank you for coming out and supporting the annual barbecue at, at our church, and let you know what it, what the money goes toward. Any other money that we do not spend, we use it for children, youth, and young adults in the community, and we do expend those funds in the church there. But we really appreciate your support, and just appreciate the support of the community. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. Porter. Also, I'd like to extend a thank you for the church. It is a tremendous activity that goes on, but it takes more than a single day to coordinate and accomplish, and the total number of pounds of meat and chicken is astonishing, the day your parents serve. So a big thank you to Jones for what they do for our community. That is all we have for what actually signed in, is welcome to the floors, anyone that has not had an opportunity to sign in, to come forward, if they'd like to at this time.
Greg Shipley, 611-690-HAMNGRAB. I did sign in, and I'd also like to thank, thank you for the coat for Spring Creek, uh, East Ridge, Metro and Spring Creek, president of Spring Creek PTA, so I'd really like to thank you very much for all that. I know you'll probably bring it up, and you're, you're going to speak about the meeting Saturday.
Yes.
I'd love to be there for that meeting that you and Kenny Custer are having with the local coffee shop. I've been thinking of trying to put together, we used to have a East Ridge revitalization and some things like that, and I'd like to maybe come in on the cocktails and see if we can try to find people in the community that might want to come up and give some of their time for some of the houses of the widows or widowers, or, you know, the evidence that can't do the home improvements that might need to be done, maybe we can work on some kind of thing to help out that way, and cut grass or do something. I don't know how we'd put it together, but Andy and I had talked about that during the campaign, that we'd like to do it, but since she made it up there, she didn't want to do that, she, you know, it was going to leave her to campaign people in our citizens in East Ridge. So I'd like to, thank you for doing that, and if that's all right, I'd like to show it up.
Sure, absolutely.
Thank you.
Do you have anyone else? We will move into communications of councilmembers. Councilmember Cagle?
Yes, sir. I know some of these things are working great tonight, and some of them, so what is the status of some of the things being repaired, fixed, or whatever?
We're working on that, actually, they came out today to do a demo, but I didn't feel comfortable with doing a demo during the council meeting, so we're going to save that for one of the other meetings, that's unlimited recorded meeting, to test those out. We should have one in the next week or so, and we can all get that scheduled. Kim's done a great job by reaching out to that company, and I think that's what we'll do. I just didn't feel, I don't feel like tonight's the night to do an actual demonstration to make sure that it's going to work, and work with Janet's recording device, but we definitely need to look at this. Mine's constantly getting feedback, every time I go there, it's making terrible noises, so.
I know Mr. Thompson seemed to be working good over there, we went down there, and then I barely can hear the mayor, so.
And mine homes... I'm not saying...
It sounds like I'm going, talking loud, I don't know. Can y'all hear me out there? Good. Vice Mayor Milton?
I would just like to say, I think that your meetings with the mayor's great idea, and you're having Kenny's, I really appreciate that.
Thank you. Councilmember Johnson?
I don't have it.
Councilmember Wood?
I don't have anything for that.
A few things that I have. One is, and I'm going to probably defer a couple of these to Assistant City Manager, one is, I want to provide an update to Mr. Britt, who came forward last council meeting, on the review of the police department policies, and then to get an update on our city manager applications, where we're all with that. I'd like to congratulate Vice Mayor Hilton on her inauguration this week in Nashville. We're looking forward to what you can do for us and the state and nationally. Also, to Mr. Shipley and Vice Mayor Hilton, I am starting a monthly meet the mayor event. It's going to be informal, it's not going to be a set agenda, it's going to be open-ended for questions and answers, and provide updates of what's going on in the city, what we are looking forward to do, and plans. Each month, I want to bring a department head in, so they can give us a little background and updates on what's going on in their department, and also field and answer questions. Mr. Custer's going to start us off in January, and then we have chosen Mr. Wilson for February, Parks and Rec Director. So it's going to be at the local coffee, we'll start there, we may move it around to other businesses that are interested in opening for this type of event this Saturday at 10:00. So anyone and everyone is welcome to come. City Manager, do you have anything?
Yes, I would like to start with the two updates, one for Mr. Britt. Rex Gordon is the police consultant from Antioch that I was talking about, and I'm bringing this meeting, he's coming in to work on some strategic planning for the police department, along with Hunter Rogers is also going to be helping facilitate those meetings. The actual meetings will start this month is the plan, of course, Assistant Chief Allen, it'll start with meetings with the supervisors, and then they'll have a patrol meeting, and then a committee meeting, and we'll be reaching out to different members of the community to start working on SWAT analysis, and really trying to identify the direction that we want to go as a whole, which also would include a policy overview. All of our officers have an electronic copy currently of our policy manual for the East Ridge Police Department, that we're, we're more than happy that they, that they have that readily available at this point. Will be available for any, any questions, if you have any concerns coming up, and I believe you're going to be involved in this process anyway, which is fantastic, so thank you. And as this progresses, this is something that we all need to look at citywide, as, you know, as us even having a work session on conducting some strategic planning, again, we really need to focus on our mission and vision, and I think this is a great body to make that happen, so, so we can, we can cast that vision out to everybody. The other is city manager applications, you were provided with a folder with nine applications, there's obviously more than that, but nine that met the qualifications that set forth in the advertisement period, along with had the background and experience of city management and economic development. There was just a nine that we, we overviewed, we provided a little bit of overview for, how you all want to... How you all want to proceed from here is completely up to you all. There were a few that were turned in after the deadline. There were some transitions of other cities with the city manager petition because it was right there at election time. So some individuals did apply. We did not include those because they didn't apply within that period. At this point, it's completely up to you all, the direction that you want to go as it relates to interviews, background checks, all sorts of.
So with that, I will, so these are in no particular order, they're just?
They're not. They're just up to you.
Okay. So I will ask directions for council, how do you want to proceed? Would you want to have all the applicants interviewed and processed through by the city and provide that information to us? Or do you want to go through those individually and provide feedback to the council?
I would carry around about five before we started. I agree.
And narrowed down by council or narrowed down by administration?
Five of us.
Yes. More?
I'd like for us to either pick two or three and put them together, or pick five and then we'd see how many we got. I'll pick the same person and then go from that group.
Good.
I'm not sure, but you can throw it out.
That was giving me the next question.
I'd like to mention to thank God for that decision I got here. I'd like to mention my experience there.
What kind of timeframe would you like to, also like to place that with review from council? Yeah, two-week period, one-week period?
Next council meeting.
Next council meeting?
The next council meeting, we're going to pick five or we're going to just?
You're going to pick five, me going to pick five, I'm going to pick five. And we're going to see how many of those five that we all agree on we can with. And then take those together.
And it's also under my pressure that the nine that are in our folder, it has not been verified. These nine have found other jobs yet. We don't know that. I would like to pick five, but I know we're still interested in the job.
I agree.
I can have.
And we have H R verified.
Some of them have been verified, but I'll make sure that all of them, all the ones that you have available are verified.
When we talk about background check, and what does that entail? I mean, we're at a point where we've been without a city manager for a period of time, and I realize some of that's been because of the election and other things. But is there any harm in getting started the process on all nine of these? I mean, I don't want to wait two weeks and we get here and find out between all five of us, we're going to have all nine of them on the list than we wait to do more weeks.
We could go, we'll start with verification tomorrow. We'll start doing that tomorrow. As far as background checks, I think it needs to be preliminary, and that's going to be basically start searching, finding things that's happened in the past, look what their history is, which most of them were pretty, appear to be pretty honest about their work history. Obviously, that's something you want to ask an interview. Anytime you look at city manager applications, obviously, you're going to see those two-year spans in different places. But the main thing with these employees is really search out and see where they came from, where the city is, or where the township is, what the population is. Like I said, a lot of that is spelled out within these applications and everything. So how deep do you want us as staff to make like this?
Are you talking about the background check that they would do to make sure they're honest in all of this?
That's a little bit, that's a little bit separate. The legal, criminal background check is, that's later on down there. This is a background check to kind of look into their work history, where they've been.
Work history, credentials.
Exactly. And all of that's verified now within the number.
It is, it's okay. All right.
So are we going to wait and look for an email to come out that verifies that all nine are just the listed applicants that are still interested in the position? So we can then pursue picking the five?
We will start making those notifications tomorrow. Unfortunately, we will be at the will of the responders.
I'll still research my five regardless of telling here.
Right.
Okay. All right. We'll move forward, and then we expect the list of five of each council member. Next council meeting, let's proceed forward. Anything else?
Actually, I have one or two more things before I get to, there's a lot of questions and things that's been brought up about resurfacing projects. I was going to let everybody know that this council did approve the resurfacing projects. I'm going to let everyone know what the roads are that we're going to be resurfacing just as soon as we have some breakaway. It got a little delayed this year, and I apologize for that, but we're going to be resurfacing. Eleven streets, and they are Camp Jordan Road, Beulah Drive, Edwin Court, Jordan Run, East Street, Fawn Drive, Martha Avenue, Berry Road, Maxwell, McClure Drive, and Bastard Lane. Also got some other projects that'll be coming about as it relates to McBride Road, John Ross Road, all those, Amanda's working diligently on those. And as soon as the WWTA wraps up in base of ten, we'll be finishing doing Hilton Drive and focusing on those areas, Lansdale, and all the areas that have so many street funds. So I'm going to let everyone know, not forget about resurfacing. Continue to work on the resurfacing project. For a number of years, we didn't do a whole lot of resurfacing, but we're really focused on that. We want to make sure that we continue with that process.
To that point, if I may interrupt. Do we have, do we have an ongoing internal process of reviewing streets we have now? Because I'm hearing of a lot of potholes and deteriorating streets. Do we have someone actively looking at that? Or do we just need to have that communicated to administration when a citizen or someone encounters or encounters? Because I'm hearing we have several that are pretty dangerous.
It actually leads into something that we are researching and do a demo zone right now. It's actually called Ready Click Fix. And it's an app that will be downloaded by every citizen. They can create their own profile. When they see a pothole, when they have an issue, they can type a picture it up and it will send it to the correct person because of the drop-down boxes. So it will eliminate the call in city hall, trying to get someone at the front desk to transfer them to the street department who may not watch or are on vacation. And then, you know, we have to be more efficient in our responses. We have to be more efficient in how we address these issues. And I'm hoping that this is going to be a solution that really helps us as a whole because it works very well with codes and everything. You shoot a photograph, it'll GPS to tell you where it's at, create its own work order that it's assigned to, and then also charts and graphs it across this. So, and it's an app. It's used, it's like a three-one-one app. It's used by many units of hours. So we're just going through the demo process and looking as we reach out a bunch of time.
As you know, we've discussed, we want to communicate that out to citizens that we are actively looking at, not necessarily resurfacing the streets, but also repairing several that are in bad condition. Starting with those.
That's right. I'm going to also be working on year-end totals for the different departments. So thank you. Tell me regularly some good numbers, and I won't have them all. But the one I want to write about is Animal Services. They adopted out three hundred and forty-eight animals this year. So that's.
Two of those crowds.
So we are working, I'm working with police, fire, administrative staff, and we're working on a better reporting system that we'll be able to provide these updates on a monthly basis. That should be posted on our website. It's going to take a little time to build the program. But monthly, you'll be able to see crime reports, stats, you'll see the numbers and stuff in the line of police. You'll see the number of refusers collected through sanitation. You'll see the number of street lights repaired or replaced, meetings that the county has, meetings that the resources has. So we're going to try to be, we're talking about, you know, open and transparency, and that's one thing that we want people to understand, what we do. Now, A, sorry, I don't want to talk. Letter A is the acknowledgment authorizing the city to enter a potential trade loan agreement with PBA, which is the Public Building Authority in the amount of two-point-three million dollars. We have received that grant, or that fund was approved, and that's for the upgrades of the Jordan Park. And this is just a yellow notification, like you all know, that we're moving forward with that project and that we've received the funding.
That requirement is met. Anything else?
I think I'm good.
All right, we'll move into old business. I made.
An ordinance to the city council of the city of East Ridge, Tennessee, to amend Order Number one zero seven eight entitled, "In order to provide revenue for the city of East Ridge, Tennessee, for the fiscal year July one, two thousand eighteen, to June thirty, two thousand nineteen, appropriate the same to the payment of expenses of the municipal government, I designate a portion of the unassigned fund balance of the general fund and drug fund, and by changing the revenues of the general fund, and by changing the expenditures of the general fund, drug fund, and capital project fund."
So do I have a motion?
This is what I need to make the amendments on books. Take a motion to approve. Reporters Number ten ninety, with the amendments changing the capital projects funds from four million, seven hundred twenty-one thousand five hundred dollars to four million, six hundred seventy-one thousand five hundred dollars under the budget and the file out here in Congress.
Give a second. Do we need discussion?
No. Actually, I think what the confusion is, if you look at it, is when you're looking at it, I don't have one other number in there because we're not amending. That's my eye. I only put in what we're amending. And the actual capital projects budget is. Is four million, seven hundred twenty-one thousand five hundred dollars because I'm not showing the fifty thousand that is in there for the software. So it's not listed. So that's why it doesn't look like it's right because I'm only showing what I'm amending at next second speed limit. I mean, I can show you, but it is correct.
As is?
As, yeah, it is correct the way I have it. Yes.
So the total budget is four point seven two point five?
Yes, and it's just because I didn't put in the fifty thousand because I wasn't amending that. But it doesn't change the bottom number. I hope that that changes.
Final, I told you, you hadn't took the one hundred twenty-seven out of it.
Yeah.
I thought this time you could get out and put it up here.
Yeah, yeah, but the bottom number is correct. All you have to say is, I promise.
Look at a motion, amended amounts. Then, yeah, then we need to, if that's been corrected, then let's rescind the motion to approve subject to the amendment. We'll get it right.
I'll make.
No, it's.
I'll retract my motion.
We want to make sure it's accurate. Thank you for your input.
I know that, especially doing budget, I mean, it does get confused. It gets confusing. I apologize.
All right. So that clarification, do we have a motion? Ordinance cannot as is. Do a motion by Council Member Chelsea and a second by Assistant Mayor Hilton. Do we have any other discussion?
Do we need to leave four D on consent agenda?
Yeah, I was going to, was going to bring that up as well. If you made the consensus adjustment.
And Director Paul's, I know what you now know, and what that is, the financial report for four D, is it in fact accurate?
Yes.
All right, then, yeah, we need to go back to modify the resolution or the consent agenda.
Yeah.
Do we want to proceed with any?
Sure.
Yeah. Any discussion? Call please.
Assistant Mayor Hilton?
Yes.
Council Member Cagle?
Yes.
Council Member Chelsea?
Yes.
Council Member Witt?
Yes.
Mayor Williams?
Yes. All right, we need to move back, backward to consent agenda.
Where we stand with this is there has been a motion to approve subject to the amendment to the financial report. Now it's determined that that amendment is not necessary. So why don't we move to rescind the approval of the consent agenda and then go back and move to approve the consent agenda as presented?
Do you have another motion?
All right, so we have, yeah, so we have a motion to rescind. And a motion to Council Cagle, Assistant Mayor Hilton. Any discussion? Call please.
Assistant Mayor Hilton?
Yes.
Council Member Cagle?
Yes.
Council Member Chelsea?
Yes.
Council Member Witt?
Yes.
Mayor Williams?
Yes. Present consent agenda approval again as presented.
I make a motion. I make a motion to approve the consent agenda.
I'll say. We have a motion from Council Member Witt and a second from Council Member Chelsea. Any discussion? Call please.
Assistant Mayor Hilton?
Yes.
Council Member Cagle?
Yes.
Council Member Chelsea?
Yes.
Council Member Witt?
Yes.
Mayor Williams?
Yes. All right, we'll move into new business.
I made Resolution Number two eight eight three, a resolution of the city council of the city of East Ridge, Tennessee, awarding bids for replacement of fencing on thirteen softball baseball fields within Camp Jordan Athletic Complex.
All right, Mayor and Council, on December twenty-first, staff received four bids for fencing for upgrades at Camp Jordan Complex for thirteen baseball softball fields. Four bids were received. Premier Fence was the low bid. There's two options. Option one is demo and replace all existing fence within the Camp Jordan Athletic Complex at baseball and softball. Option number two is demo and replace all existing fence except the outfield fence where the five-foot metal fence exists. Option one, price is six hundred twenty-eight thousand seventeen dollars. Option two, price is five hundred seventy-six thousand seventeen dollars. Staff, it's recommending that we go with option number one. Option number one gives us a uniform look, replacing all existing fence to the black PVC-coated fencing so that all of our fencing within the complex looks the same. Gives, it ensures a durable fence.
Yes, uh, some of the height differences or the, the height of those fencing is five foot and what the scope of work is for six foot fencing. Another reason that I would recommend a higher six foot fencing is when it, when you have five, four and five foot fencing, you tend to have problems with people trying to get on your fields. They still probably killed with six foot fencing, but, but less likely.
Um, I'd surely try. I'd like to see salvage as much as we can maybe for the dog park or, um, I don't know if we're gonna be needing some fencing for that, but it is salvageable.
Most of the fencing that's currently there that's not salvageable will be, will be hauled off and by the contractors, which, uh, this is the premier fence. I think this is Walter Donnell. You had any questions related to the scope of work? Has he answered any questions?
The, the, the difference between the fencing, the fifty thousand dollar difference when I wanted to.
Fifty-two thousand.
Fifty-two thousand. And that's just to replace the black fencing that we already have that's five foot to five foot, six foot fencing.
No, um, option two is to replace metal, I think it's a sheet metal facade that is, um, framed up with six by six wooden post. It's not metal fencing, or it's not, it's not the same exact black fencing that Councilman Cagle was talking about.
That's the fence he's got around the corner, three hundred foot fences. It's not had to have a big boy fence bar. And, and they hadn't been up to years.
So that's all the, the metal fencing. So here demo replaces all existing fencing except outfield fencing where five metal fences is. So those, if you don't, if you do option two, you still keep those up there?
Yes, option two would, you would be keeping a five foot, um, sheet metal framed up fencing with wooden post. Um, the, if, this project is calling for a six foot high, um, metal, deep black, deep coated fencing. And so aesthetically, it'll look, in my opinion, it could look bad.
Well, then you'd have to replace it with the house.
At some point, how long would you probably have to replace that wooden?
Oh, we're replacing wood posts that are three to four years old at this time. Definitely within the next ten years or so.
The, the treatment that's in treated wood now is not as good as it was ten or fifteen years.
We're trying to avoid a piece of the project, which we've been notorious for doing in the past.
And, you know, again, if we're, we're wanting to, uh, put ourselves on a map for making this park really nice, this is the opportunity to do it now. Uh, it is a price of fifty-two thousand dollars, but how much would we spend in a few years to replace, you know, these posts that are gonna deteriorate and, and they will deteriorate over the next, you know, five, ten years.
Unfortunately, we've cut and cut and cut and cut and cut out of this property.
And, and we had four to five bids. Um, they all, you know, have the same scope of work to bid on and this is the price that we have, you know, we're able to narrow it down to.
And I do have a price for that other restroom facility. For an individual restroom facility, a hundred and twenty-six thousand dollars plus twenty thousand dollars to get utilities down in that quarter park. That's what they were charging us per facility. Raise the funding. We have that two point three, hard number.
We're gonna round in here to it.
We're drawing. Hard.
All right. Do we have a question?
Your six foot fence and your eight foot fence. In fact, I'm like something, I always like to have taller fence on behind me in the outfield than a six foot. Cause that gets more and taller up there and, uh, the nose around about sixty-five, sixty-six, seventy-nine, six foot fence. Am I looking at this right?
Yes. Almost double, huh?
Yeah, it's definitely.
Eighteen seventy-five versus thirty-three, is that?
Yes, it's a per year, sir.
Per year, huh?
Oh, I was looking at here at the trees. Yeah, I'm looking here. Do you have six feet, six foot, nine, twenty, thirty-five?
I see. Okay, we have a motion by Vice Mayor Hilton. Do we have a second?
Is that for option one or two? We need to specify that.
Yes, for option one.
As recommended.
I'll say.
All right, we have a, uh, motion from Vice Mayor Hilton. And a second from Councilmember Chauncey. Do you have any other discussion? Call, Mr. Hilton.
Vice Mayor Hilton?
Yes.
Councilmember Cagle?
Yes.
Councilmember Chauncey?
Yes.
Councilmember Wood?
Yes.
Barry Williams?
Yes. Resolution approved. Adam B.
A resolution of the City Council, the City of East Ridge, send the city to amend resolution number two eight six six to purchase mobile and portable radios and related equipment for the police department.
Mayor, council, this is the, uh, what was the discussion, uh, over the last several months about constructing a communications tower as part of the Tennessee Valley Radio Communications System. When it come down to signing the contract, I had multiple meetings with Assistant Chief Allen, with Motorola, with, um, with the radio shop to ask what the different options were. We also met individually with police supervisors, with patrol officers to kind of really identify what our issues are, what our coverage concerns were. Uh, a lot of that was identified by lack of communication within the vehicle. Uh, we, we know that there's some spots located through, out of the city, well, I said throughout the city, in certain portions of the city, certain buildings that do have what we call a dead spot. But a dead spot doesn't mean that that whole building is out, or the whole block is out, or a whole street is out. That just means a by block from here is where mine is. That radio could tone out. But you take the notion that it can tone out in the east of, but our terminology is the dead spot. Uh, at this video with Motorola, Assistant Chief Allen can, can, uh, can also explain is, I wanted more of a confirmation on what this was going to accomplish. What, or were a hundred percent that this is gonna work inside these buildings? They, they couldn't, they couldn't, they felt comfortable, but they, they couldn't say that. Um, and currently our, our police officers carry a portable radio on. Uh, most departments that are around us carry a portable and also have access to a mobile, which is a much stronger unit. Uh, if something happens to their portable right now, their only communication is cell phone, so they can call you on the phone. So this will provide them with two oper, two radio communication devices, one being much stronger. We also have the ability to go to a talk channel that's actually pulled into the console that is a repeater. So if they get into one of these spots that tone out, they can go to that repeater channel and it's pulled into the, the communications base. Um, so by changing these, we'd be purchasing, I don't have the exact number.
Forty-five for the cars.
Forty, yeah, forty-five for, and one for the, for station.
Uh, forty-five, forty-five models for the vehicles, a station for the station along with a booster or a antenna, and then I believe ten portals that we're gonna have to purchase within the next year.
Correct. The ten portals will upgrade every officer, including reserves, from the older radios up to the, uh, the, the six thousands, which mostly, but there's only one full-time officer that doesn't have one, I think, uh, on our reserves.
So we feel this will enhance, enhance the interoperability as a whole. Uh, and I'm not saying that a tower may not be needed at some point down the road. Uh, but as we see and after, after really looking into it, having multiple meetings, um, and taking in officer consideration, we'd be a little more comfortable with, with going with the mobiles and starting with that process. And by looking at the coverage area maps, uh, that's where we would like to start, maybe not each officer with a mobile.
Mobile and a, and a car also results in one other situation that our officers run into. A lot of times when they're out on the traffic stop, we're out with a person and they need to run information, a tag or a person, uh, license information, they have to switch to the information channel, which is where communication wants all that stuff run. If they switch from that communication to that communications channel, they're no longer in constant contact with everybody else, including the dispatchers. So what we're, our, this will, they can switch to that with one thing, they can still have constant communication with their, with their mobile or with the hand.
And we're looking at this on a utilization basis. This will increase utilization and increase their, their capabilities within the vehicle. Um, and by using the repeater channel will increase the, uh, the ability to talk in those, some of those spots, those areas of concern. Uh, it's just the direction that, that we're gonna provide that option. And like I say, I, I was stood up here three weeks ago, four weeks ago, and, you know, finished all the tower. It wasn't originally, uh, my project, but as we continue to, to look down, I kept bugging everybody and asking questions and questions and questions, and I just, just didn't really receive the answers.
You know, three weeks ago, when we were relating the people that was presenting the title, so the radio brought up, but then they were kind of shoved, shoved under the table there. So, uh, this, uh, control station for the police headquarters?
Yes.
Is it going to nine point one or is it coming over here?
I'm sure what you're asking.
All right.
It'll, it'll be in communications. It, it's built here. It's going there. Over here on right over.
There's one point is gonna be happened with our radio.
Oh, absolutely.
Yes, yes.
Yeah.
So, so we won't have no locks there?
No, sir. And the radio should turn out. Will it, uh, tone out inside our building?
Yes, no question. Do we still open the tower that's up on top of the ridge up here?
Let me find that. Cause I'm in Ottawa. I know that's a work theater tower, but I'm, but I'm in Ottawa.
And I will say to Mr. Cagle's point, uh, I brought a lot of these questions up back when we were prior voting on the tower, but they kept reassuring the tower as the best solution. Uh, expensive, but a best solution. And I had some of the same concerns. So I'm definitely, uh, good with this, this potential solution, which also gonna save us over half a million dollars.
Yeah, and I'll be honest with you, I didn't look at it as a same instant point. I, I really looked at it as, is, what are our needs right now versus what are our needs potentially later on? Um, when I talked to other municipalities, even in other counties, their last resort was going to a tower. And they already have mobiles there. So they had more equipment than we have. They went to a tower. We have less equipment. We were going to a tower. So, um, and, and we have officers that have, you know, up one or two that have a mobile. Um, they have explained to me that they've never had an issue with a mobile that they've had for over ten years. And I can also speak for the fire services. We have mobiles and every fire truck can have, uh, mobile eight hundreds. We've been using eight hundreds as long as the police department. And we don't have it.
And another radio gives them, another tool for their safety and assistance.
Absolutely.
All right. So do we have a motion for resolution twenty-eight eighty-four?
Any thoughts on what we're gonna have to give him with PBRRC or FCC approval? Or we're gonna have to do that with these?
The only other approval was FAA approval that goes behind the tower. This does, I'm really.
Up approved.
That question doesn't wait to, I'll be asking. So we also will be talking about a, uh, internet service provider with the tower. Is that something we've entered into at this point or not? So we're not committed?
Cause we never signed, yeah, we never signed the contract with Motorola period. That was like a total contract.
Only we had a contract for providing internet service for that tower. So did we enter into that yet or not?
I don't believe so. I, I would have thought we would have done that prior to signing that contract with Motorola.
Sure, that's.
Thank you.
A second?
Uh, to the motion by Vice Mayor Hilton and the second, uh, Councilmember Wood. Do you have any other discussion? Call, Mr. Hilton.
Vice Mayor Hilton?
Yes.
Councilmember Cagle?
Yes.
Councilmember Chauncey?
Yes.
Councilmember Wood?
Yes.
Barry Williams?
Yes. Thank you. Thank you. Resolution approved. Adam C.
This is what I talked about earlier. Um, this, we've kind of covered this already, but I, certainly there may be more. So this is here. This is the arrangement that we've been approached by the Channel Eagle Red Bulls to enter into, uh, some sort of form of an arrangement where they will agree to infuse upwards of a million dollars or more into the construction of a training facility on the northern field of Camp Jordan. In exchange, they want to be able to hold, uh, host some of their training, uh, to occur during their season, Monday through Friday, from about eight-thirty to about one. And then their hope and I think desire is to have this field as a premier field for the community to advertise and use and market and promote, um, regional and national soccer tournaments with hopes of the trolls initial exposure to East Ridge and of course the Red Bulls as well. Um, we're still working on this. Assistant City Manager Custer and I are, we've met with representatives of the Tennessee Recreation and Education Services. We're working on what limitations, if any, exist with regard to the usage of a private entity of these fields. We're also checking with the comptroller to make sure that we are properly complying with any sort of, uh, agreement that we're entering into with a private entity on public lands as well. We hope to have an update at the next council meeting and in between, if we get something, we'll notify you as well. We, Mr. Custer and I expect to hear back from the RES sometime mid-week of next week. And we will continue to be able to call or in connect, in contact with Mark Nanatoff, who's got contact with the comptroller, the comptroller we recommended we contact to discuss this venture. He'll be helping us as well. Once we get the blessings of the respective agencies, then it will be up to this body to determine what they want us to go forward with that arrangement.
Sir, do we need to, uh, table this item or we don't have this?
No, I will just stay on the agenda. Really, this probably should have just, it might have been more appropriate than just said, you know, a public update as to this venture. Uh, no resolution has been prepared yet, so there's not really anything to table at this time. There's not enough assigned to it.
Do we have any questions? Adam D.
This is the discussion, purchase of property located at Oakdale Avenue and East End Avenue for the construction of the dog park and animal control facility.
Mayor, council, this has been the item of discussion for the last six to seven months. And we're just gonna be in the direction, uh, how you would like to proceed on this property. Look at the property, the property that's been surveyed. Um, it will accommodate animal control facility. Uh, there's, it's a discussion, uh, for now. If you just build a dog park there now, they build animal control facility later. So really, we need to see what direction, if any, you would like to go as it relates to this property.
Council, open up for discussion.
Five of them. Uh, that's what I was first got out, Mr. Norman, just thinking that we didn't have money to build the animal control building. But the dog park would be funded after, we've got enough to two hundred and ten thousand to be funded after. Reimbursement money.
For the board reason?
Yes, sir. So, much as I'd like to see our property, um, dog walk good on something, we already own, we keep them at five small property. I think we're gonna go ahead and give permission to purchase plenty and hopefully get to build animal shelter. You can go ahead and flood something down there. We're not really doing animal shelter out of that, so.
It'd be elevated above.
Yeah. We got.
I had some, uh, feedback on this. Uh, I, I looked at his, his notes on, on the, in, in the agenda packet here. It, if, and I see the, the footprint of the potential animal shelter. It appears that about half of the properties in, half the properties in the floodway, the other half of the properties in the floodway. So from what I'm seeing, it just really looks like it's, it's got great potential, possibly for animal shelter, which we desperately need. I'm all for that. But I just don't see there being an animal shelter plus a very usable dog park with it being in the floodway. The floodway is a lot different than the flood plain. Floodway floods, well, you've got a hundred-year flood plain, which tells you that it's a good possibility it will flood once every one hundred years. And then the five hundred year flood plain tells you it's a good possibility it'll flood once every five hundred. Floodway, which we all know, but it'll, it'll flood probably ten times. It's, it's gonna stay wet. It's gonna stay wet. And we're gonna go and invest money in the front portion of this property for a dog park. It's probably not gonna be a mosh pit. I don't know. More than half the time in the winter time. Be lucky to get a few days out in the summer, where it might not be a mosh pit. But I'm all for ha, you know, buying the property for an animal shelter. That's what we need. But I'd like to explore the opportunity for the, the idea of putting the dog park back over Springs.
There again, over there, it's, it's a bars right there.
It's not in the floodway. That'd be even about there.
It's in the, there's portion of the floodway, it's in the flood plain, but it's, it's much more open. It's a much more open space.
But it is, it is property that we already, and actually another idea with, with the, the front portion of this property here on the west end, that could actually, even though it's moshy, it will most likely be moshy area, it could be used for the animal shelter to walk the dogs that are in the animal shelter instead of public use. But public, public use, obviously, they come to visit, uh, you know, they see an animal there, they go to adopting, they can walk through that, through that area. But, uh, I, as far as a public animal park, I would like to explore the option of going back over to Springville Park and, uh, put the dog park over there. We might have plenty of fencing for it.
Kenny and I talked about putting it there as, by the, from the arena.
That was a, that was a location that we thought would be adequate that's near the walking track and also near park. The thing about Springville is the same way. It actually, you know, originally we looked into that because we thought we owned much more property at Springville that would access, you know, trails and stuff like that. But we don't own it so far back into the woods. Um, the other thing about the animal control facility and, yeah, we, we don't have, currently have the funds and the budget to, to build that. But ideally, once we have a piece of property, would be to go next, this next fiscal year and design an animal control facility with construction the following year. But once we have the property, then we can go to design and then construction within it, that following year. That would be, that could be the direction that we would prefer.
And did we decide that we could use some of that old fire hall?
That's not that, it can be used as part of the design, you know, it, it, it is.
Now let's, uh, hold up on buying a piece of property till we get inside to see how the property we are on the, uh, maybe the city will come up with a property that we already own.
Well, we're waiting to get council comments. Not all it's, or similar to Councilman Chauncey. I think personally, I think this is a good location for the animal control facility. Essentially located, it is behind the shopping center. So you're not invading a subdivision neighborhood. Um, there's not residents on the other side or behind, within close proximity. Um, it would give, with this current design or the, the preliminary sketching gives you the ability to have people that are coming into the dock, a small area to walk them and, you know, get to know them and stuff. So a two-fold, we're looking long forward. This could be purchased and used as a dog park additionally, possibly converted into animal control facility when we have budgetary funds. I do like the idea of having another location or two, whether that's in the park or, um, here at the, uh, the Grunt's School with control levels, of course, for usage, um, for Springville. So I think, first I think this, it is a good location. We'd like to see to, to proceed forward with the purchase, but that's one of five opinions up on the dais.
I would like to, sorry, I would like to, uh, move forward with the purchase of the park.
Do we have a second? Do we need a second to have it on the, no? All right. And, Mr. Custer, put it on the line. Do you have any discussion? All right. We have one other item. It would be, yeah, all right. So we move the resolution twenty-eight eighty-five forward for the, uh, for the work session for the appointment of the chairperson to the beer board. So I would like to, uh, appoint Cardinal Story, who's a current long-term, uh, member of the, uh, beer board as the chairman. If you like. Uh, but also I would like to say, uh, glad to see you here and your health returning as an assistant planning as well. You both were excellent. So glad to see you both. What about?
I'll, 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 I'll send everything. I'll, I'll, you did more of your parts.
I keep you in every message that I got. I am about a eighty percent better.
Glad you're here. I appreciate it. Thank you for your willingness to serve. As we discussed, we'd want to have a motion. This, what the motion would be is not to approve this, but it's just a motion memorialize, you're approving, just you're memorializing the action that Mayor Williams is taking right there. Second. We have a motion by Vice Mayor Hilton and a second by Councilmember Chauncey. Any discussion? Call, Mr. Hilton.
Vice Mayor Hilton?
Yes.
Councilmember Cagle?
Yes.
Councilmember Chauncey?
Yes.
Councilmember Wood?
Yes.
Barry Williams?
Yes. Thank you, council.
Good night, gentlemen. Some of y'all, I mean, I've been involved in chat and do the politics and we were gonna, my wife and I were gonna build our grandma. Well, she told me, we're, we're all taking our last breath in East Ridge. So we're going to stay here and I intend to be more involved and more open. If I can be of any other service, let me know when I consider it an honor and thank you, Brian, for marriage. I will say that.
Thank you very much, sir. And thank you everyone for attending. Uh, we will adjourn this meeting. Have a good evening.